The following is the procedure for public comment and participation. Individuals wishing to speak on agenda items must complete a sign up card prior to the item being introduced. Those wishing to speak on quasi judicial public hearings must complete a sign up card and sign the oath. Sign up and oath cards are available on the table. Individuals wishing to speak on non-agenda items may do so under petitions and requests from the public present. This opportunity is offered twice in the meeting and individuals may speak at either the first or second petitions, but not both. No sign up card is required. Citizens shall not comment on any issue more than once during the meeting. All comments except petitions and requests must address the pending issue and citizens will be given three minutes to speak on agenda items. Next, citizens wishing to speak on the consent agenda must submit a sign up card identifying the items of interest. Each speaker shall be limited to three minutes to speak on the entire consent agenda. And finally, all sign up cards and exhibits being submitted to the city council shall be placed in the box on the table.
The purpose of the city council meeting is to discuss city business and proper decorum must be displayed by all in attendance. Public input and participation is encouraged. However, all persons in attendance shall comply with the rules for meeting procedures and shall refrain from any action that disrupts the orderly proceedings of the council meeting or hinders a council from performing its duties. No person shall interfere with the rights of others to speak, hear, see, or attend the proceedings, make threats of violence, disrupt the proceedings with shouting, fail to confine remarks to the agenda item under consideration, nor continue to speak after the allotted speaking time has expired as these actions shall be considered disruptive and disorderly. The mayor shall caution any person who violates these provisions and disrupts the orderly proceedings of the council meetings and they shall be directed to comply. Any person who fails to comply as cautioned shall be ruled out of order, shall forfeit the remainder of their speaking time on the agenda item under consideration and will be requested to return to their seat. Persons who fail to comply as directed shall be subject to removal from the council chambers by law enforcement or such other actions as may be reasonably necessary to enforce these regulations. Notwithstanding, the mayor may order the immediate removal of any person from the chambers who possesses a threat to property or life safety. Nothing in this section shall be construed to limit or restrict a person's right created by the constitution, law, ordinance, or regulation.
Good evening, everybody. I want to welcome you to the City of Titusville City Council Regular Meeting, October 28, 2025, at 6:30. I call this meeting to order. For the invocation, can you please take a moment of silence? Thank you very much. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America and to the stand as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Before we get started, I want to talk about the events of the last two days. Unfortunately, our city was devastated with over 15 inches of rain in a short afternoon. No city could have withheld that. And I firmly believe no city would have done as well as we have. We actually did pretty well. While there are people that have had water intrusion in their homes and we still have streets that are still flooded, the water did go down in a lot of areas very, very quickly, very, very fast. So I can't say enough to Brad, Brad, sorry, Brad, Kevin and Sandy. Those guys have been working around the clock the last 48 hours, them and their teams, trying to keep lives and property safe. There was no loss of life, loss of life in Titusville. I don't think there was any injuries, just things that we got to continue to work on. As of October 27th, I've did a proclamation of a state of emergency in the City of Titusville. And I think it's important that our citizens know that all five of us up here care deeply about this community. And we're going to do everything we can to help protect our residents, our homes, our businesses, whatever we need to do. And with that proclamation, it gave us the ability to act quickly and accessing additional resources. Unfortunately, there's a hierarchy to these things and as of yet, the county has yet to declare a state of emergency in the North Brevard area, which has limited us in accessing maybe some state level resources, which then prevents us from going even higher. We're doing everything we can so that our residents can hopefully get to the place where they can file individual claims with FEMA so that they can recover and restore what was lost. Later on in my report, I will be bringing up our stormwater master plan and asking council to direct staff to rework that plan in its entirety so that we are prepared because what happened, while it was something we could not predict, I still do not want to see it happen again in the City of Titusville. And it's not about 10 years from now, it's about 20, 30 years from now. So we're going to plan ahead and we're going to make every opportunity available for us to be successful. And with that being said, I've asked our city manager to give us an update as where we currently stand.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. To put in perspective the amount of rainfall we had in such a short period, normally for the month of October, we get about four to five inches. On the 26th, starting around seven o'clock till about one o'clock over a period of six hours, we got 15 inches, which is a one in 500 year event according to the National Weather Service, not something, the stat that we came up with, National Weather Service, that's the stat. As far as current status, I can tell you that as of this afternoon, all traffic signals continue normal operations. We did have a number of city buildings that had water intrusion, including City Hall, the City Hall Annex, the Harry T. Moore Center, and the Fire Department Headquarters, and they were mainly roofing type issues that we are addressing. As far as lift stations, we have 104 lift stations, 53 of which had high level alarms. As of right now, 24 still have high level alarms and we're addressing that. We had a number of, well, actually, four lift stations that had overflows. Lift station right here at South Street had a 12,000 gallon raw wastewater overflow, which impacted the Indian River Lagoon. Our master pump station had 60,000 gallons of raw wastewater overflowed, and we're still working on that issue. Over in Parkland, the lift station had electrical panel damaged by floodwaters and a transfer pump was placed there to, to control the flow. And of course, our sewer field operations crews continue to monitor lift stations with 24 hour coverage. As far as water reclamation, we're treating 17 million gallons of wastewater a day. Normally, we, that is 3.8 times more than normal. So almost four times normal amount of wastewater is passing through our treatment plants. So therefore, we did have, over at Osprey Water, it was overcome by this huge deluge of wastewater, had 797,000 gallons of, of reuse water, which is already treated, overflowed the outfall box, and it's being contained on site. There may be a potential that some of it may seep into a retention pond, but we have it plugged up where it won't go into Indian River Lagoon. And, you know, we're monitoring that. As far as street maintenance, we have street maintenance crews working throughout the day and evening to repair and restore. We did, we did reach out to our county and to the state and to the cities to get additional assets. The City of Melbourne sent a vacuum truck. The Florida State DOT sent a vacuum truck. The City of Cocoa has offered a reserve fire engine in, in the event that we need that. And, and we are, you know, getting any offers of assistance that we need. So there's a cooperative state throughout the county and the cities to help us and augment our crews. And again, you know, we are making progress. There are still a number of areas that are underwater and, and we're doing our best. Obviously, the St. John's River just crested, I believe, this afternoon. And, and we're hoping now that that will allow us to get some water pumped out of some of the areas that are still affected. And we are going to be doing building and damage assessments in the coming days and we're continuing to do whatever we can to help mitigate this incredible rain event. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager. And I just want to reiterate, we're doing everything we can to get FEMA to open up their, their checkbook. I've had personal calls and conversations with our federally elected representatives, Congressman Herodopolis and Senator Rick Scott that are working things on their end and we're, we're going through the process. So we're, we're here to help and support any which way we can. I know City Manager has been out to a lot of the affected areas today. I know I have, I'm sure other council members have. So this doesn't sit in a vacuum. You know, we're, we're people in your community. We care. So with that being said, we'll proceed into the rest of our agenda. Member Nelson, can I have a motion, please?
Okay.
To, oh.
We have our minutes.
I saw approval on the minutes on the agenda and I forgot to look below it. Never mind.
Yes, sir.
City Manager.
The first item is boards and commissions, and that's six A, and that's the Historic Preservation Board. And the terms of regular members, Roz Foster, William Gaten, Alan Kiesel, Joseph Adams, and one alternate member, Ulla Rupp-Crofton expire on October 31st, 2025. They have all expressed their willingness and desire to continue to serve on the board and have, have requested reapportment for another two-year term to expire on October 31st, 2027. And there are no other applications on file. And the, the recommended action is to reappoint four regular members and one alternate member to the Historic Preservation Board for two-year terms to expire October 31st, 2027.
Thank you, City Manager. City Clerk?
We have one card. It's Dan Johnston.
My name is Stan Johnston and I've been, this is about a historic, Historic Board. And I certainly approve what they're doing here. And I'm hopeful that since they're seeing that this is being approved, that, that what has happened at the la, just the last meeting, the misinformation and so forth, it's happening within the City of Titusville. Thank you.
Thank you. City Clerk?
Yes, sir. We, Tony Shifalo.
Good evening, Shifalo, the historic Norwood House. I'll use that address tonight. I've come to blow the horn of the Historic Preservation Board. I recommend reapportment of the four regular members and the newest alternate, Ms. Ulla Crofton. She's lived here long enough to have real historic stories that she lived through firsthand. Ms. Foster is an encyclopedia of Brevard historic lore and an internet of information about current historic issues. Alan runs the most efficient but most encompassing meetings I've ever attended. Even though short in time, often less than an hour, our Historic Preservation Board meetings are deep and accomplish a lot. May I remind you, architectural guidelines, Joinerville Project, et cetera, et cetera, our historic tour. We're working now in Menstrory Modern in the space industry, come to Titusville. He allows alternates to be part of the conversation and considered in our decisions that require no official vote. Member Adams, our secretary, is the keeper of a vast amount of historic, history and historic places, museums, and he augments my growing library of architectural historic buildings and books by culling out his collection. Matt could serve on no more a formal board as he only wears shorts to meetings. Very appropriate to Florida. So he couldn't dress up to go to something fancy. He's our board's fact checker as he uses the computer up here during the meetings to research topics relevant to the discussions that we're having. And you have no other candidates, so there's no other choice to keep your efficient and functioning Historic Preservation Board active. So you might as well, and I ask you, please consider a blanket approval of these four people. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Tony. City Clerk?
I just need to ask Ms. Villan, did you want to speak on this item?
Yes.
Okay, it didn't have a item number.
Oh, I may have just forgotten. I'm not used to putting in cards. I think I've done it twice ever in the three years I've been here. Hi. Melinda Villan, Historic Indian River City. I had planned on applying to the alternate position, but I didn't see the little like things at the bottom and I missed the deadline for it. However, with the Joinerville Project, with things that I have heard in the meetings that the Historic Board wants to cover, I'm all for it. I would actually like to offer my, I'm really good at research. I'm sure you guys have realized that now, that I am fantastic in research. So I would like to, instead of sitting on that, I would like to offer my services of historic research to the Historic Advisory Board. And just to prove the point that I'm good at it, if you're not a member of the Talk of Titusville, I posted a thing about the flooding and, and historic nature of it that really isn't known unless you do really deep dives. So just to show that I can help the Historic Board out, even though I am not a member. In the early 1910s, Titusville Fruit and Farmland Company bought over 22,000 acres for the Dallas Pine Land Grant. Headed by E.W. Ellis, they built Indian River City around the railway station, Pritchard's Landing, and got to work draining the wetlands west of I.R.C. to sell off as farmland parcels. Yes, the same Ellis as the Addison Ellis Canal. There were two phases to the project. One creating drainage ditches around each property, drain the land and feed it into the St. John's River, and the other to drain Bird Lake to the Addison Creek and have 800 acres to sell. They brought in large dredging and draining machines and started clearing miles of ditches to drain the wetlands, and then brought in even bigger machines to build the Addison Ellis Canal. And no, those machines did not come from building the Panama Canal, they came from Chicago. Over time, a lot of those drainage ditches have been filled in or redirected. That is why we have areas in southwest Titusville have major drainage, drainage issues. It was built on drained wetlands and over 100 years later, that water has less places to go. And you wouldn't know all that stuff unless you were like me and had the hobby of reading 100-year-old newspapers for fun. So please prove this board and please know that I am coming for it in two years. Thank you.
Thank you. City Clerk? Council? Member Nelson?
Would you like a motion?
Yes, please.
Okay. I would move to reappoint the four regular members and the mutton alternate to the Historic Preservation Board.
Second.
I have a motion by Member Nelson, second by Vice Mayor Cole. Any further discussion from council? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. City Manager?
So the next item is the North Brevard Commission on Parks and Recreation, and they have included a semi-annual written report in the agenda packet and no action is requested.
City Clerk, are there any cards on this item?
No, sir.
Thank you very much. City Council, anything? Seeing none, City Manager?
Sir, the next item is Planning and Zoning Commission Leave of Absence, and you are asked to approve a regular member Theodore Garrard's request of leave from the Planning and Zoning Commission from October 15th to December 1st, 2025.
City Clerk, are there any cards?
No, sir.
All right. Member Nelson?
Move to approve of Member Garrard's leave of absence.
Second.
I have a motion by Member Nelson, second by Vice Mayor Cole. Any further discussion from council? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. City Manager?
So the next item is the Titusville Environmental Commission, and the recommended action is to approve staff time to review and revise areas of the Conservation Element Policy 1.16.2 in the Comprehensive Plan, as well as other policies and related strategies that may help clarify and strengthen the intent of protecting wetlands on smaller parcels. And Brad Parrish is here to answer any questions you should have on that initiative.
Thank you very much. City Clerk?
Laurie Thompson.
Laurie Thompson, MEMS, and I'm the co-chair of your environmental commission. And, and our job is to look at environmental issues around Titusville and make recommendations to you. And so I hope you would support this request for the TEC to be able to work with staff to review and revise areas of, it says in this, in the agenda, Conservation Element Policy 1.16.2. It actually should be Future Land Use Element 1.16.2 in the comp plan. And there's a couple of other places in your staff report, or I'm sorry, in your agenda packet where it refers to Conservation Element Policy 1.16.2 or CE Policy 1.16.2. Those should be changed, those references should be changed to, references to the Future Land Use Element Policy 1.16.2 or FLEU Policy 1.16.2. It would be great if staff time could be approved and, and also permission to work on the rest of the Future Land Use Element Language regarding conservation land use. The TEC has two more points of confusion and suggested clarifications to look at for the Future Land Use Element. And obviously, TEC and staff need to work cooperatively, cooperatively together if this confusion, this ongoing confusion is to be properly cleaned up to everyone's satisfaction. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. City Clerk?
Tony Shifalo.
These numbers that Ms. Thompson was just reeling off are, are related mostly to the ordinances and things relating to wetlands. Rains of monumental proportions are increasing due to atmospheric alterations. Flooding, a lot due to recent nearby construction on filled-in or parcels of wetlands that are separated from the whole. Geographic alterations. Old, weak infrastructure. Flooding. Wetlands absorb drainage, prevent flooding.
Do we need to say anything more?
Thank you, Ms. Shifalo. City Clerk?
Last card is Dan Johnston.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. City Council, Member Stokoe?
Yes, so in my briefing, when I saw the advisability, I was the council member that requested a list of all the advisabilities that we've given staff. And so we all got that, I don't know when you sent it to us, either Monday, this sometime within all this that's been going on. And there's 23 items on that list. And I was telling the city manager, that probably makes it difficult for staff to prioritize those. So my suggestion would be, and if you looked at that list, and at the last meeting, I had asked for the advisability on the wetland, storm, flooding issues, my request would be that that would be at the top priority with this request being a part of that. That would be my request.
Member Nelson?
I like that idea. Brett, how long do you think, how much time do you think will happen in this? Afraid to ask.
It's hard to guess. So I'm going to point you to page 38 and 39 of your packet, and you'll see the specific recommendations that come from that Natural Resources Report that the TEC is referring to. Those are policies that those recommendations are trying to address out of the city's comprehensive plan that are very difficult to unwind. So we will do our best, based on your, if you approve this, to work with the TEC to see what we can come up with as far as changes to this language. But if, if we need to, we may need to come back to you to seek assistance, depending on the complexity.
Thank you, Member Nelson. And conversation I had with Brad during my briefing is he informed me that the county's comp plan that they submitted to the state was, what, turned away, basically?
Well, they received an objection to their ear, just like we're going to hear our ear, our evaluation appraisal report, which has comp plan related amendments later this evening. The county had their, some issues with theirs. I'm not sure what specifically was the issue, so I don't have an answer for that. But if you are going to make changes that are more stringent of land use or even code changes, it appears to be a conflict with Senate Bill 180, for some of the communities we've been talking to. And I think the county came across that issue.
Yeah, so, you know, big fan of us, you know, taking this step. My only concern is, you know, we dedicate the time and resources to do it and it basically, we get our hands slapped and said, we know we can't do it. So just something to consider. Member Muscoso?
Do you think, because one of the suggestions is looking at wetlands that are less than five acres, do you think that would be something that the state would say would be placing, making it harder to develop?
Well, one of the recommendations in here is to, if you see on page 38 and 39, states the recommendation is to clarify the intent of the five acre rule to include adjacent properties. Wetlands acres. Wetlands acres. Wetlands acres, wetlands five acres or larger are currently required to be designated by conservation land use. And in the adjacent column, talks about particular strategy related to that and the need to clarify that and to come up with some criteria, such as coming up with a functional value. You know, those things could be the same as what the state already uses, so you have to be careful of that. You can't have regulations or processes that are similar or duplicative of what the state has. So we would need to carefully evaluate what we can actually adopt if we want to come up with something that's different.
Is there something we can do with that one that's not necessarily a comprehensive plan change? Because I feel like that is kind of the loophole that developers use. They look at it as they subdivide the wetland. So does it have to be a comprehensive plan change, or is there something else we could do to add?
It's hard to answer. Like I said earlier, when you look at these particular policies, they sometimes, it can be difficult if you, if you make some tweaks, it could impact other policies because they're all intertwined together in the comprehensive plan. These policies come into play primarily when you have an application to amend the comprehensive plan, the map, in other words, the boundaries of the conservation land use. And so these policies come into play as far as reviewing whether that's a good idea legislative-wise. So making a change here could cause us to maybe look at other policies. And so, as you can see, sometimes it can be more complicated as you look at it. We evaluate this, we'll have to determine how difficult this might be, and but it is something we need to get assistance with, we'll have to come back to you to get that request.
I'd just like to thank the T E C for bringing this forward. I think it's important because we often have people come up, and then there is confusion over some of this, and so I think it's helping us clarify our language a bit. So thank you for bringing that forward.
Member Nelson?
I sort of think we ought to try it, see what we can do. It's always bothered me, the idea that you have two landowners, one has four acres of wetland, the one next to it has three acres of wetland, and that doesn't count. So I think we ought to try it. I'm trying to figure out how I can say it where it gives you some flexibility. So I think my motion is to approve staff time to review and potentially revise the Forland Use Element regarding wetlands. Does that work?
The advisability request was the Conservation Element Policy 1.16.2.
I'm trying to keep it sort of...
Well, if you, basically, the T C's, I'm sorry.
Trying to keep it a little bit vague so that you're not hampered in any way. So if you look at 1.16.2, I don't want you to say, I'm only supposed to look at that particular section and not look at anything else that's related.
I think if you approve this advisability or this direction to us, we will look at these two policies, the strategy from the Future Land Use Element and, I'm sorry, the Conservation Element and the 1.16.2 from the Future Land Use Element. And if we see there's room for making changes to that, and we find that other policies may need to be changed as a result, we'll show that to you.
Okay.
You know, we'll tell you what the impact might be.
So if I say move to approve staff time to review and revise areas of the Future Land Use Element 1.16.2 and any related sections. Okay, so that's my motion.
Second for discussion. My only question with that is, going back to what I originally said, I would like to have us look at that component, but all wetlands are stormwater, probably what Mayor Connors said he's bringing up in his report, and this be a part of it. Because now this is just adding number 24 on a list, and I want to direct staff that this needs to be top priority, not, you know, the 24th off of this list.
Maybe I can make a suggestion. Maybe you can make a motion to reconsider that directive and include it all together.
Yes.
Or amend it.
Yeah, do you amend it to that?
To include that.
Okay.
So you withdraw your motion?
Well, I'm not drawing it.
Or amending it to what I said, that it would include the wetlands, stormwater, flooding, and it would be the top priority for advisability.
Right.
My understanding is that we were just going to amend the motion made at the last meeting, so.
Oh.
All right. Go ahead and make your motion again.
Yeah.
So moved.
And my second still stands.
All right. Is staff clear on the motion? Because I don't think I am.
It is. It is to continue to look at the wetlands, stormwater, flooding, to include the Future Land Use Element that brought up by T E C, and it would be the top priority for advisability.
Thank you. I just wanted you to say it on the record.
Yes.
Appreciate it. I have a motion, and I have a second. Any further discussion from counsel?
Last thing I will say, and I'm glad we are looking at this because Senate Bill 180 will have some changes this session. So I'm hopeful that as we do this, because for the timing, our ear will probably get rejected as well, but then we'll just keep working, and then hopefully we'll be fine.
All right, seeing no other lights on, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. City Manager?
The last item is the Titusville Housing Authority Semi-Annual Written Report, also included in your agenda packet, and no action is requested.
Anybody have any thoughts on it? Seeing none? Okay. We're at the point of the meeting for petitions and requests from the public, present, non-agenda items.
Casey, Maryland Avenue. I appreciate what the mayor and the manager were saying this early at the beginning of the meeting about the flooding and also the great efforts of the Public Works Department and your declaration of the emergency. I wish to report on the extensive flooding that happened in my neighborhood, if you don't mind. I live on Maryland Avenue, as you all know, Casey, Maryland Avenue. The rain started Sunday evening on Maryland Avenue about 5:00 PM, and by midnight, the entire street was flooded waist-high. I went waiting at midnight. Four homes were flooded, 2290, 2300, 2310, and 2320 Maryland, all the homes of elderly residents. Their homes were flooded to the degree that all furnishings were destroyed and had to be tossed, and the drywall up to two feet high had to be removed. Multiple vehicles parked along the street were flooded, destroyed, and hauled away by tow truck. While we've had minor flooding before, nothing like this. Let me explain. An underground culvert drains the 30 acres of woods north of Maryland Avenue. This underground culvert goes under Maryland Avenue to an open ditch that parallels Maryland Avenue between Georgia Avenue and Maryland Avenue. The city had not cleaned this ditch in some time, this ditch that runs along Georgia and Maryland Avenue. A baffle box is being installed on Tennessee Avenue about half block from Maryland Avenue. I spoke to the contractor when this work began about a week or so ago. He asked me why the city had not cleaned this ditch and said that this was needed to be taken care of. While I would have thought that he would have contracted the city to clean the ditch prior to the building of the baffle box, that is not what happened. So the ditch that flows into the baffle box hadn't been cleaned for a long time, and I think that may have added to the problem with the flooding in our neighborhood. I wanted to let you know that no doubt other neighborhoods, such as mine, were flooded Sunday night. Our neighborhood is not particular, I understand that. I also want to commend the Public Works Department. They do an admirable job with the funding they are provided. They must prioritize their efforts while considering funding allotted to their department. Therein lies the problem. As our city grows, Public Works needs to be more robustly funded. Existing infrastructure needs to be able to accommodate ever-increasing demands caused by climate change, like the 11 to 15 acres in five hours experienced in my neighborhood. When considering, one more sentence?
Thank you, Ms. Kay.
Okay, I'm going to squeeze in.
I gotta be fair to everybody.
Please, when considering new development, think about flooding.
Thank you.
Hi. The storm the other night. I want to say thank you to all of the emergency response. Unfortunately, there was not enough. And I can say that because when I got the hysterical phone call from my 16-year-old daughter who was trapped over by Bonne Meade on Singleton with trash cans and pallets floating past her, there was no one to help her. I know that because I stopped a high-water vehicle who was coming through there as I was waiting from Derry and Singleton all the way to Bonne Meade in waist-deep water in the pitch black and pouring down rain, because I will stop at nothing to make sure my daughter's safe. And you know what they told me? They had higher priority calls. They couldn't stop for my 16-year-old daughter to make sure she was safe while she was surrounded by the stormwaters because they had higher priority calls. So there's not enough. There's not enough emergency response, and that needs to be clear. Now, having said that, that doesn't take away from the emergency response that was had, because they, I'm sure they gave everything they had to give. But it's the city's responsibility to make sure that there's enough to go around. And at 48 years old, I waited a quarter mile in waist-deep water to make sure my daughter didn't float away in stormwaters, because nobody was there to help us. And when we were done, boys from MEMS in Titusville and lifted trucks drove out to Singleton, and they pulled people out of their cars, and they pulled their cars out, and they drove them to safety. My white knight came in a white diesel and let me and my daughter ride in the back of it, because Bonne Meade was the high point, and there was high water on either side where vehicles couldn't get through. Otherwise, we would have been trapped there all night long. There's not enough of response. And furthermore, unincorporated Brevard where we have good drainage can take 24 inches in 24 hours and not flood. It's an infrastructure problem. Granted, you still would have flooded, but if your infrastructure was fixed, it wouldn't have been as severe, and if you'd planned for an emergency response, people like me wouldn't have risked our lives to save our own children. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You know, I find it disheartening when I hear things like that. But I also believe the same person says that there is no infrastructure in MEMS, and that person's boss voted against funding a fire truck today in District 1 and a fire station. So I think that is an issue as well. Mr. Johnson, you have the floor. You have the floor, Mr. Johnson.
I'd like to have her.
Mr. Johnson, you have the floor. City Clerk, start the clock.
Can you give her a question?
City Clerk, start the clock.
She hasn't had the card.
Mr. Johnson, you're wasting your time.
I'm asking you to give her the card before I speak. Would you do that, please, Mr. Cole?
No.
Okay, no, thank you. Okay. I want you all to understand what's going on here. It's just, we had, we had a meeting at 5:30, and what I happened to is I approached them with an explanation of what the problem is with the city that has to do with drainage. And I explained that Mr. Brad Parrish and Eddie Galindo were convicted of fraud by H.R. Joe De Nera, and they admitted it. And it has to do with what? It has to do with flooding, flooding and drainage, and you didn't want to listen to it. And that is why I changed my shirt to wear this shirt that says, "Fire, fire our city manager," who is, I don't think you're compassionate about what's happened to this flooding, but this happened to me. Shame on all you. Shame on you, shame on you, shame on you. I told Laura Lee I wasn't going to do this, but not until after what happened. In other words, I'm saying is that Brad Parrish committed fraud, and so did Eddie Galindo and East Coast Central Florida Regional Planning Council regarding the Resilient Titusville Report of 2019, and it was amended accordingly. And you should know that. And I think that Tony Shifflow should report it in her historical reports, too. So I'm letting you know, and you don't want to hear about it. You showed me complete disrespect. Mr. Cole, you disrespect. You respect my engineering profession. You expect, as far as I'm concerned, is I want you all to understand that God's law is that water flows downhill, and you violate it repeatedly, 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 repeatedly in your stormwater management plan and in your sustained development report and Mr. Galindo and Mr. Parrish. And you don't do anything about it. You don't even want to hear about it. You're not listening. You're not listening because this is a serious issue of drainage. And I was talking to you about it last meeting. You don't want to listen to it. Mr. Cole doesn't want to cooperate. You guys are not telling the truth. You're mishandling information, and you're giving misinformation, and you're withholding information about stormwater, about what you're doing, and you're not doing it right. That's why I'm wearing this shirt. It says, "Fire the city." Okay, what I had is, I just went, this past Wednesday, I was at a prayer, no, it was, it was a breakfast meeting. Mr. Connors was there, and I explained that I needed help and prayer for my mission to oppose city corruption in my area of engineering. I get disrespect completely. May I have another minute?
No, you may not.
Thank you. Thank you, Megan.
First of all, before I get to my agenda, you've probably heard, if you can't baffle them with brilliance, you buffalo with bull, you figure what the rest of it says. Okay. I'm still trying to get you, Mr. Mayor, or someone of your staff to correct the embarrassing display of the American flag in front of the Fire Department Headquarters. I take it that you, your staff, or your fire chief are not knowledgeable of the current display and should be at all times be on the observer's left, which is not. You could go out here on your, Washington Avenue and look, and the flag is on the right. And it showed, with the way it's shown right now, it's shown as patriotism to the Fire Department parking lot, not to the Fire Department Headquarters, which if it was on the left, it would be shown to the headquarters. And the flag is considered to be nothing but a piece of cloth on a pole the way it's flying right now. I will not end with a thank you or your staff counsel. You have done nothing to deserve it in regards to the display of the American flag. In my personal opinion, you and your staff are nothing but a new, nothing body in regards to the flag. And I challenge anyone on your staff to correct me if I'm wrong. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name's Joanne Stanley. I came to give a gift to the city of Titusville from the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, and she's passing out the flyer to you right now. We are placing giving machines in the Alamante Mall November 19th through December 14th. Now, a giving machine is a large red vending machine, similar to all vending machines, where you make a selection and you pay. But this time, in the vending machine, what you pay for goes to a charity. There's five Central Florida charities being represented in this machine, and one of those charities is your own North Brevard Charities. It's challenging to get, to be represented. You have to be very, you have to do a lot of good work and be very well situated to be able to be in this machine. So there's five Central Florida nonprofits and two international nonprofits. Each of the five Central Florida nonprofits can select five items to be in the machine. And for example, North Brevard Charity chose one of their items with bedtime storybooks so parents and family can read to their children, because families in crisis sometimes forget to do those things. That item is $5, so if you would select that item, the $5 goes to North Brevard Charities. The church covers 100% of the expenses of this machine. The charity gets 100% of the donations. So I'm giving you an invitation to come to the ribbon cutting for this machine, which is on November 20th from 1:00 to 2:00 in the afternoon. And I would like to request that you tell others about this experience in your community. so that you can help your own people. And I would like to request that you bring other people to the giving machine. Yes, it's a donation, but for the person who comes to the machine and makes the donation, it's a feeling. I wanted to see if you had any questions for me about it.
Well, first of all, let me say thank you for supporting one of our local charities here in Titusville. North Brevard Charities is a great organization, and again, we really appreciate that. Member Moscoso?
Thank you so much. How far did you come, all the way over from Orlando for this?
No, actually, I live in Merritt Island.
Do you? Okay.
It was really easy to get here.
Oh, good. Thank you. If we can't make it over to the Altamont Mall, can we send a donation? Or, I mean, would it just be better just to give it to North Brevard Charities? So if people want to get involved but can't go to the giving machine, how do you recommend that they get involved?
Probably just a donation straight to them if you can't do it that way. The church provides an online donation, but that won't go to local ones. It only goes to the international charities.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And I have my card if you have other questions.
Appreciate it.
Good evening, council. For the record, my name is Dwight Severs here in Titusville. Again, I want to congratulate Mr. Abadi on his appointment as city manager and attorney treasurer for her appointment. I view this as a new beginning on the part of the city. I would expect a number of changes in the city organization as well as personnel, which I believe are in the best interest of the city. I likewise would expect attorney treasurer for you and city attorney to set a new tone or direction for the city, upholding the public policies as stated in Florida statutes 112 and 286, and using the statutory words, recognizing that promoting the public interest and maintaining the respect of the people in their government must be of the foremost concern. It is the public interest for public officials and employees to maintain the respect of the people in their government, and to remember they are to hold those positions for the benefit of the public. I would expect the city manager and city attorney to further emphasize transparency, communication with the public, accessibilities to public records, and fair treatment of all citizens, and obviously following the rule of law. Second, I would like to mention, for 40 years and serving with seven different city managers, I sat on the dais along with the city manager. Matter of fact, one city mayor had me sitting there and the city manager sitting there. That was Mayor Mary Annie, who served on the city council for 20 years or more. So I would respectfully suggest that this was dais... I was here in 1968 when this was dedicated. I was here whenever they rededicated this council chamber. The dais is laid out, so the city clerk is there, the city manager is there, the five of you are sitting there, the city attorney is sitting over there. CDC guidelines dealing with COVID changed that. It's over. Why haven't you returned to the normal seating arrangement? Don't you respect the role of the city manager and the city attorney? Don't you? You understand protocol? You understand certainly protocol? In addition, is it in the interest of public safety that they be sitting here? Is it really in the interest of public safety? In addition, I'd like to mention with regard to the assistant city attorney. In 1999, for five years, I did it all myself, didn't hire outside counsel for virtually anything. I needed an assistant, and the city manager and the city council agreed with me. Let me just simply say, on a personal note, because of not hiring an assistant, in some ways, I paid a very heavy price for that. Did I just finish? One sentence?
I'm being fair to everybody.
Could I ask council for a minute? I see two heads, three heads shaking. Is that all right with you, Mayor?
If there's a motion and a second, a vote.
There's a motion.
You said protocol, so I'm following the protocol.
Okay.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, you can have additional minutes.
Thank you. In some ways, I paid a very high price for the commitment I gave the city since in 2000 I lost my 17-year-old son. In hindsight, I probably spent too much time for the city and not with my son and my family, and I regret that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Severs. Want to go?
Hello, Melinda Villan, Historic Indian River City. I'm not going to be able to be here for a little bit, because I got cast in a show. Yay! So I'll be super busy. Yay! However, I just did want to come down and remind you guys that we still have a freight truck problem on Acorn Drive. But before I do that, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for coming down and having the historic tour. I hope that you realize how important the history of Indian River City is to all of South Titusville, because Indian River City really is the history of South Titusville. I also want to thank Mr. Cook for coming down and talking with me about putting a freight loading and unloading zone on Acorn. All right? Thank you so much. He also put up signs that say, "Do not block driveways," because they were blocking everything. Nobody went out and said, "Hey, do we have 12 feet by 70 feet?", which is what a loading and unloading zone on private property is supposed to be. Nobody went and checked to see if we had that on Acorn, just like nobody went and checked to make sure that my little half alleyway was a part of the trucking route, because it never was. It took four months for me to discover that. So there should be no trucks pulling up. And right now, I have trucks pulling up between Acorn, on the alleyway between Acorn and Birch now, and pulling out onto there. So what I have provided you with, when I had my first determination, all right? The city member representative that came down for the freight truck determination told me that the neighborhood plan does not matter, and that Indian River City is an overlay district, not its own zoning. And yet, from your conditional use for a food truck that was going to go into Indian River City, it states right here, "The neighborhood plan..." And this is from your city staff. "The neighborhood plan for the Indian River City neighborhood was adopted by the city with Resolution 8-2012, and shall be the guiding document for zoning regulations. That plan states there are many issues with the interaction of residential uses and commercial uses along the Hopkins Avenue, with very little buffering, inadequate setbacks, and no screening. The plan's first policy recommendation states, 'Limit the encroachment of non-residential uses within the core residential areas of the neighborhood by instituting new zoning regulations that stabilize single-family uses and encourage single-family land uses and growth.'" And then you adopted that plan. I should have had a safety study done before you decided to just pull freight trucks up, because guess what? We are 22 feet across. There are only 11-foot lanes, which means when freight trucks are pulling and delivering on the street, they are actually pulling up and parking into the second lane on Acorn, which means they are pulling up into the residential zone still, which is a violation of your 2017 codes, because everything directly around my house is zone residential. I've also provided pictures of the trucks parking and how dangerous it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you ever petition for the vacation?
I have not petitioned for a vacation. Mr. Abati, when he came down, actually said that he would suggest that the city vacates it, and me not petition it, but the city vacates it instead. So I'm just kind of waiting around to see if we're going to get a freight loading and unloading zone, or the alley... And by the way, that's also a school bus zone right now, because you guys didn't tell the property owners that freight trucks were going to be pulling up in front of their house. And my favorite thing was watching a freight truck pull away, and 10 minutes later, a school bus pull up to drop off kids.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. City manager, can you get working on that and bring that back before us?
I don't recall saying that. I probably did, but I don't recall saying it. I did have a site visit with her, and obviously, I'll continue to work to get resolution. I know she's very passionate about the issue, and I certainly want to get it resolved.
Thank you. I understand. I understand. Thank you. Sir?
Good evening. My name is Tom Dobson. My wife and I own a 25-acre parcel of land surrounding the Country Club Heights subdivision that contains a lake that maybe some of you already know is crucial to the stormwater runoff system all the area west of Park Avenue from the YMCA to Bell Terrace. Three canals and three different streets empty into this lake or onto the surrounding wetlands around that lake. Water flows from this lake in a northeastern direction toward Lake Morbeka through canals and wetlands surrounding neighborhoods to the north. Eventually, this water finds its way through the heart of Titusville into the Indian River. The lake is at full capacity right now, as are all the canals and surrounding waterways to the north. Some streets and homes in these neighborhoods are flooded, including one a block from my home. There is no warware for any more water to go where we don't want it to go. I know that you have and are highly concerned about this situation. What I'm also concerned about is any future high-density development and the impervious services that come with it encroaching on any part of this critical stormwater system and the additional flooding it will certainly cause. Thank you. You have a map there. What questions might you have?
Seeing none. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Angelia Falzone. I'm from Titusville, Florida. I am concerned about the SSA 22024 PD South rezoning. My concern is the negative impact that this amendment and rezoning may have on my property, the sensitive areas around the plant development. I'm sorry.
I have to stop you. This is petitions and requests, non-agenda items, and because this is on the agenda, you'll have to wait to speak on it during that time. So I'm sorry. So this is petitions and requests from the public, non-agenda items.
Laura Lee Thompson, MEMS. I really appreciated Ms. Villan getting up and pointing out their newspaper article from 100 years ago, stating that drainage from the wetlands was directed west to the St. John's River floodplain. So it doesn't go that way anymore. As Mr. Dobson said, it goes east, and it ends up in the Indian River Lagoon. So right now, not only are the big wetlands on the south side of 405 draining into the Indian River Lagoon, the wetlands on the north side of Singleton and the north side of 405 are connected through culverts underneath 405, and they drain into the big wetlands, and they all go towards Lake Morbeka, and there's massive, massive flooding occurring once again in Temple Terrace and Baker subdivision. You can't even get into those neighborhoods. It's unbelievable. So I want you to think about, in order, you know, to be truly functional, wetlands have to have upland borders. And, you know, you're required by St. John's River Water Management District to maintain a 25-foot border. That's not enough. And also, wetlands need to have trees in their borders, because trees are tremendous... They absorb tremendous amounts of rainwater. And if you take out the trees and the borders, then the water that those trees would have absorbed has to go somewhere, so it's going to go in the wetland, and it's going to make the flooding even worse downstream. I want to mention, coming up on November the 4th, for anybody that's interested in flooding in Titusville, the Resilient Titusville Vulnerability Assessment Public Engagement event is going to happen, November 4th at 5:30 PM. It's in the Tom Statham Community Building at 7101 South US Highway 1. It's across from the entrance to the Space Coast Airport down on the south side of town. And, you know, we've been working off of the FEMA flood maps from 2019, which obviously are inadequate for the kind of flooding that's happening in Titusville. So one of the really exciting things that's going to happen at this workshop is the first public reveal of the brand-new 2025 FEMA flood maps for Titusville. And I've been told that they are showing a lot more flooding potential areas than the 2019 maps. So I think that's significant, and we want a lot of people to come to this event. And so, you know, the timing of this, I heard tonight that it was once-in-a-500-year event. Developers are only required to keep the first, like, inch of rain for a 100-year flooding event. The rain's not going to stop. It's going to keep getting worse.
Appreciate it. Petitions and requests from the public, non-agenda items. Seeing none. City manager?
So moving on to consent, we have three items plus one addendum item, total of four consent items. Do council wish to pull any for discussion?
Seeing none. City manager?
Sir, I'll go ahead, and I'll read the titles for the record. 8A, Economic Development Strategic Plan. 8B, Award of Contract for Indian River Forest Main Completion Project. 8C, Florida Department of Law Enforcement Drawn Grant. And 8D, Tranquility Right-of-Way Use Agreement.
Thank you, city manager. City clerk?
We have Toni Schiflo for item 8A.
Schiflo, Tropic Street. Basically, I really liked the Economic Development Strategic Plan findings, and I just had a couple of thoughts while the presentation was being made earlier about the bike trail. Now, I spoke to the CRA, which most of you are on, well, actually, all of you are, the CRA, about the trail coming over the Garden Street Bridge, that big, long trail, and it dumps onto the ground, and then you come onto Main Street. What happens is, if you're coming from town, you cross over the railroad tracks, and you're immediately in the eastbound traffic on Main Street, which isn't much of a problem now. There isn't a lot of traffic. But according to our future plans, there's going to be a lot of development along Main Street. It's one of the gateways to be, and so there will be a problem. So in thinking about the economic development, he mentioned, "This is a bike-trail town. We ought to make that connection more safe for bicyclists." Arts and culture, Ms. Stokel. You were the one who said, "We don't support the arts. Let's just take it off our goals and objectives." But here it is, coming back at you. Arts and culture are going to be very important. I spent a long time in the city of Atlanta, where there were a number of theater, independent theater groups. There were smaller ones, and there were larger ones. In Titusville, there's only old Broadway musicals that are being brought in. What about the little black box theaters that are doing original plays, sometimes very site-specific, related to, say, the history of Titusville? I've got a play in my back pocket that a young man who was turned down by the theater in Titusville, but we're still wanting to produce it at some point. And there's another play in the works that Member Nelson is about. And also, I wanted to speak about foreign companies. That's a great idea, but you better watch out. Foreign companies mean foreigners. That means diversity. Whoa!
Thank you, Ms. Schiflo. The report also said we are more diverse than the rest of the county, so, you know, that's good. Thank you. All right. City clerk?
Yes, sir. The last card is Stan Johnston for A, B, C, and D.
No, for A. Stan, you can't bring any props up.
Okay. That's the question. Am I allowed to bring this?
You have to take it back to the back of the room.
Okay. Is that what your new attorney says?
That's what I say.
I know, but what is your new attorney?
It's what our rules say. Mr. Johnson, please take the podium. Put the sign down. Please come up.
At least Sarah will give her card.
Go ahead, city clerk.
See, you know I have a lot of...
Okay, you, that took, I know it took about 15 seconds of my, out of my time, but I want you to understand is something strange is happening right here. Listen up, Starek. This is strange, is that what happened at 5:30, they had the presentation of Economic Development Strategic Plan. Do you know how much public participation they had at that meeting of this project? Anyone want to guess? How about zero? How about zero?
Mr. Johnson, please direct your concerns.
I think you should listen. Listen, in other words, you had, you had a presentation of Economic Development Strategic Plan for over 15 minutes, over 20 minutes, and you had what? How much public participation did you have? Absolutely none. So how do you bring it up? Next meeting. You have a next meeting, you say, "We're going to vote on it in the next meeting. We're not going to have any public participation." This is, this is what the city of Titusville is doing. This is dirty. This is dirty politics. Yes, it is, Ms. Jolene Nelson. It's dirty politics. In other words, you have, you have presentation of an item over 20 minutes long, and what do you do? You have no participation in the public. You bring it up at the next meeting under consent agenda. That's dirty politics. So what is going on is I oppose this because I mentioned to you, by the way, that this is, this is a matter of drainage. This pink card that I gave out has a matter of drainage that just happened flooding, and then we have fraud, fraud of this drainage issue by the city of Titusville admitted by Brad and Eddie. And what do you do? You do nothing. You don't want to hear about it. This is a serious charge. This has to do with what just happened the last few days here, the flooding of the city of Titusville that was ignored, ignored by the resiliency Titusville plan of 2019 that was changed because of my complaint, and that these guys are guilty of what? Fraud and dishonesty, and they still work here. This is what's happened to, I want the city, in other words, I asked, I was hoping the city, that our newest city attorney would comment about my freedom of speech using something like pictures and so forth like that. She's not going to comment, I guess. Our freedom of speech is, is subject to your discretion, and your discretion is disrespectful of my engineering profession, disrespectful of the community, and violation of laws.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. City clerk?
No more orders.
All right. Counsel? Member Nelson?
I would move to approve consent, agenda, items A through D.
There's a second?
There's another card.
No, there's not. Mr. Johnson, please have a seat.
I have a card on the other page.
Mr. Johnson, please have a seat.
Second.
All right. Your point of order is not recognized. All right. Any further discussion from council? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. City manager?
Sir, the next item is 9, 9A Ordinance Second Reading, and it's the transmittal of the Evaluation Appraisal Review, and the recommended action is to approve the transmittal of the Evaluation Appraisal Review here based on amendments to the Comprehensive Plan to the State Land Planning Agency, and we have members of staff here to present.
My name is Emily Thomas. I'm here with Eliza Harris Giuliano. We're from Kimble Horn, and tonight we're presenting on the updates to the Comprehensive Plan based on the Evaluation and Appraisal Review. We were here for a work session back in July, so we're going to start off with a recap of some of the updates that have come out of this evaluation that we presented in that meeting, just to provide a refresher, and then we'll cover some additional data that we've included in the local conditions analysis since we last met with you, and then go into the public feedback and the outcomes of the input that we heard, and we'll end with some questions and discussion. Starting with the review of the updates from the work session, just as a reminder, the Evaluation and Appraisal Review is required by the state every seven years, and it's an opportunity to ensure that the Comprehensive Plan is meeting the projected needs of the city and allows us to make sure that the Comprehensive Plan is in line with any state statutes that have passed since the last update. The city of Titusville is projected to grow by about 6,000 people by 2050, and based on this projection, the current densities and the future land use will support that population, as well as the existing infrastructure is projected to meet the needs of that population based on the existing levels of service. We made several amendments to the Comprehensive Plan based on new statutory updates, some of which are required, some are only recommended. Firstly, we removed a policy in the coastal management element because post-storm moratoriums are no longer permitted by the state. We made some updates to the public schools element related to impact fees and report notification requirements, and the infrastructure element to address septic-to-sewer requirements to, in order to improve the quality of our impaired waters in this area. The recent statutes have removed barriers to accessory dwelling units, so we've added a policy to the housing element to support ADUs, and added language to the capital improvements element regarding mobility fees to support the mobility plan and enabling the city to waive impact fees for affordable housing. We've strengthened language in the future land use element related to historic preservation, specifically because of a statute related to cemeteries, but we expanded it to include other state programs as well. This update also provided an opportunity to address past public engagement exercises, including the Titusville Tomorrow exercise in 2017. Many of the goals of this plan were already implemented in the Comprehensive Plan. However, the, the goals surrounding the waterfront were lacking, so we strengthened that language to focus on the waterfront as a public realm, including connecting the trails and protecting that public space along the waterfront. And the Natural Resources Public Engagement Report from 2024, again, many of these recommendations were incorporated in the Comprehensive Plan. We identified a few that were missing and added policies and strengthened language related to expanding tree canopy coverage, green space, and policies related to native landscaping, specifically Brevard Native and Florida-friendly. Recommendations were provided by ECF RPC, which we incorporated into this update, mostly related to coastal high-hazard area and updating outdated references, and some updates to the transportation element related to access best management practices, looking at reducing conflict points along trails so that we can protect pedestrians and cyclists, as well as increasing cross-access management to reduce traffic. Some additional data has been added to the local conditions analysis in your packet since the work session. We took a closer look at some housing data to align with some state expectations for this report, and found that the majority of housing is single-family, and there's a high homeownership rate of 72%. There is an older housing stock in Titusville with 79% of homes being built before 2000, and while some of these homes are in need of rehabilitation, this also includes some of the old, beautiful, historic homes in the city that need to be preserved. About 35% of households in the city are cost-burden, meaning that they spend 30% of more of their income on housing. It's most prevalent among household income groups making 80% or less of area median income. However, this is expected to increase among income, all income groups by 2050. Now, I'm going to pass it over to Eliza to share what we heard from the community in our past work sessions.
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for having us. So we saw you previously on July 22nd for the city council work session, and we wanted to talk a little bit about how we addressed some of the comments we heard there. We heard no major objections to moving forward with the, with the update. The specific concerns that we did hear and were able to respond to were a concern regarding whether there was a need to waive impact fees, given that Live Local is a program that's already out there trying to support workforce housing. So what we did was we strengthened the language around impact fee waivers to be specific to low-income and extremely low-income housing, so it wouldn't be accessible to those Live Local projects, which are typically more of a workforce-to-middle-income project. Now, this policy enables the city to waive those impact fees. It doesn't require the city, so the city would still have to take a next step within the Land Development Code to actually figure out the specifics of those impact fee waivers. So really making sure those are targeted to the lower-income band, truly affordable housing projects. We also heard a desire to support the statewide Florida Wildlife Corridor program, so we modified some, an existing policy in the conservation element to explicitly link to the Florida Wildlife Corridor and help coordination with building out that statewide effort. During the, so we also had a P&amp;Z work session. We told you about the updates related to that last time we were here. Since then, we've had the transmittal hearing with the P&amp;Z on October 8th. There were two changes made to the proposed update at that meeting, both based on public comment. Those two changes were to explicitly add the language Brevard Native to the policy that had been crafted relative to Florida-friendly landscaping. We were already recommending beefing up that policy to address Florida-friendly landscaping, to actually require Florida-friendly landscaping, as well as to deal with the specific climatic conditions of Titusville. We've added, based on the P&amp;Z meeting, the specific Brevard Native language. The other recommendation, request from the public, which was adopted by the, the planning board, was to remove policy 1.6.8. This was a policy related to revisiting the wetland elements within the, basically doing further study on how to deal with those wetland evaluations. I believe that is essentially what you guys were talking about earlier. So the policy wasn't required to enable the city to do that. You can move forward with that, with or without the policy. The policy has been removed, and that, that doesn't affect your ability to address those During the P&amp;Z transmittal hearing, we did hear some concerns revolve regarding the level of service for water in sewer. So we wanted to provide some additional information on that that we've gathered since that meeting. So the concern was, are we going to, are we projecting enough population to ensure that we're going to meet those future water needs? The water supply plan is actually a separate exercise from this update. The water supply plan, based on our conversations with the, the city staff who manage that, is done every five years. It doesn't go all the way out to 20 years. It's a 10-year plan, but it's updated every five years. It actually uses more aggressive population estimates than we are using in the Comprehensive Plan update. The Plan update is the likely scenario, whereas in order to be, make sure that we can meet those water needs, the water supply plan uses somewhat more aggressive water, population projection. In addition, that's updated every five years. It so happens it's going to be updated in 2026. So there's going to be a very near-term, more detailed deep dive into the water needs of the community than is part of this Comprehensive Plan update. We also heard some concerns that there's been residents experiencing low water pressure in the city, so we dove into that with staff as well. The first thing we want to state is that the fact that a particular area is experiencing low water pressure doesn't necessarily indicate that there's an overall lack of water supply within the city. Those can be two, two separate issues, and in this case, seem to be two separate issues. To, the, the city responds to these concerns on a case-by-case basis. If they hear there's a water pressure issue, often they can resolve that with localized cleaning out of, I'm not going to get into the details because I'll get myself in trouble, but they're able to deal with those on a case-by-case basis. In addition, we learned that the city has about 200 pressure monitoring sites throughout the city, so that they're not just responding to those calls, but being proactive about trying to identify where there are water pressure issues. And not only that, but the city, over the next year, is planning to add more of those water pressure monitors, so that, again, they can be proactive and identify those water pressure issues as soon as possible and address them. I mentioned earlier about the population projections relative to the water supply. We did want to dive a little bit deeper into that. Historically, what we found is that the, the growth patterns have not outperformed expectations, so, you know, if we, we could project more growth, but that just hasn't been the pattern that we've seen to date, even when, in some cases, there was, there's a desire or an expectation that it might be faster growth. These plans are updated at a minimum every seven years, but they can be updated before that. And in fact, you have updated your Comprehensive Plan multiple times within the last seven years. So should conditions change, should that growth speed up, there's the ability to pivot and to, to make an update to address that. These projections are based on the University of Florida Schimberg Center, so this is a statewide resource that's used very commonly within plans, based, and we're using the Bieber medium projection with the Schimberg Center's data, which gets more specific to go down to the city level. On the right of this slide, you'll see the historic growth pattern on the top. That's Brevard County. On the bottom, that's Titusville. So essentially, historically, Titusville hasn't been grabbing a large proportion of that growth that the county has seen. Now, we've, in the past, been engaged with you on vision planning and essentially trying to identify things that will improve neighborhoods in the city and probably capture more of that growth. So I think that's something that you all would love to see, and we'd love to support you in that. But for this purpose, we're following the standardized projections that have borne out so far as to what, what's likely to happen with respect to future population. And with that, I'd be happy to hand back the, hand back to the chair and, or to the mayor, and take any questions if you so desire.
Thank you very much for your presentation. City council? Member Stokel?
Yes. My concern is regarding the level of service as well. Just as our city manager was giving the update, our sewer is at almost four times the capacity that it normally is running, I think, right now, due to the storm. So how do you guys make your calculations whether or not we have enough capacity for what we're estimating the 6,000 additional residents?
So we're using the adopted level of service within the Comprehensive Plan. We did not change that. That's what's been adopted in the Comprehensive Plan. We did talk with the utilities about what the actual current service usage is, and we made sure that we started with a baseline that was commensurate with what's actually being used, rather than higher or lower than that. So we did that coordination. If it's related to a storm event, I believe that may be a separate issue, but a little bit outside my expertise.
Yeah, and I guess that's my question, is normally, I think we would be fine, but if we are having these storms more frequently, how do we, as a council, plan for that to the best of our ability? So it makes, it just makes me cautious to move forward with this and say, yes, it seems fine, assuming we have no more storms, but now we just had a 1 in 500-year storm, and it's, you know, this is, I can't count, this is multiple times that we've had a 1 in 500-year storm since I've been on council. So I don't know if you're the person or somebody in our staff, how do I, how do I know I'm making the best decision for our city?
I could try and answer that for you.
Okay.
So you're referring, what's being discussed right now is the level of service standard in our Comprehensive Plan. There are several level of service standards for different facilities, including stormwater. That level of service standard, the minimum standard inside, that's stated inside the Comprehensive Plan, is related to a design. So when a new development comes in, they have to meet that minimum standard. The question is whether we should go forward with maybe making amendments to that. There was some discussion about that, that may be related to flood and storm, whatever that might be. So maybe something to consider, adjusting that minimum design standard. And then we also have the resiliency study, the vulnerability assessment that we're doing, which is a grant from DEP to look at the... which is a grant from DEP to look at the, how the city should, can adapt to sea-level rise and to more frequent storm events. So, there's two, two ways that can play out. Now, if we need to consider what kind of infrastructure to put into it, that could come out of the vulnerability assessment or any other studies, including the stormwater study that, that the Public Works Department has been trying to seek funding for.
And I do want to clarify, we looked at the level of service for sewer. There's not a per capita level of service for stormwater that, that would be a separate sort of effort.
Okay. And then, Brad, do we have a timeframe for when we need to submit this to the state by?
We already have exceeded our time. We did get permission from them. We told them that we were, we, we had a year from the date we told them we needed to do this year, and we've already exceeded that time. They accepted that timeframe. So, it just basically means that we can't process a comprehensive plan amendment until this year is adopted.
Okay. And so, if we do move forward with it, can we still make changes pending the results of the resiliency study and other things that are coming forward to us?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Thank you.
Seeing none? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
City Clerk?
Laura Lee Thompson.
So, I, I want to thank the folks from Kenley Horn for listening to your planning and zoning board and adding the native Brevard plants to, to the year, the year amendment transmittal, and also for removing their proposed conservation element, element policy 1.6.8. And so, just to make sure that you guys know what, what I'm talking about, that, that language of that said, "The city shall consider a study to research and incorporate best practices to conserve wetlands based on quality and importance within the wetland system." So, you guys just approved staff time to work with the TEC on trying to eliminate the confusions in the wetlands language. So, we would appreciate having a blank slate to work with and not make our project harder by, by adding the proposed conservation policy 1.6.8. So, thank you. When you, when you make your recommendation, please keep that thing out of, of the transmittal. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. City Clerk?
The last card is Stan Johnston.
My name is, my name is Stan Johnston. I'm registered, I'm a registered engineer, and I have a photo to present to you regarding this matter. And the photo is back here. It shows something. So, I'm asking whether I will be allowed to bring this photo, which is a sign up forward to show to the public here. So, that's a question that, that should be recognized by your, your state, your new attorney, because you have a policy that says, "I can't do that," which I believe is a violation of our constitutional rights of freedom of speech to make this presentation. So, I'm asking, first of all, is, may I bring this picture, which is, which is a, a sign, or whatever you want, to, to forward, to present to you?
Stan, the rules of council state, the signs have to be in the back. We're talking about the comprehensive plan.
Yeah, exactly. So, what I'm saying is, is that I believe what your rule is, is unconstitutional. It's against freedom of speech. I don't, so I'm asking you to somehow, maybe, maybe Mr. Moscoso can ask the city attorney to respond to this issue.
Mr. Johnson has his time. Mr. Johnson, continue, please.
I am continuing. I'm waiting. I'm waiting for a response to this. In other words, I'm asking that I, I can bring this forward because I believe it's within, within the freedom of speech, although it's a violation of, of your rules, which I believe is unconstitutional. No one will ask the question. In other words, nobody will ask it. Maybe she will.
Mr. Johnson, this is your time to talk to us about this item.
This, that's why, that's why I'm here.
You're talking about the rules of council.
This has to do with my presentation.
Mr. Johnson has the floor.
Megan can have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Member Moscoso, if you'd like to bring up the rules of council and changes to those rules, you can do that in your report, or whether those rules should be adopted or changed. But until then, I have to enforce the rules as stated.
Thank you for that. I would just like to ask Attorney Treasure her thoughts on this. I think it would just save us a lot of time. So, if you feel comfortable, I'd love to know your thoughts. Thank you.
If the question is directed at me, I would have to respond stating that the, reading the rules currently as written, play cards or signs are only permitted in the back of the room unless utilized as part of the speaker's presentation. Play cards and signs will be displayed in a manner so not as to disrupt or disturb the meeting. That's number eight of the City of Titusville Council Chambers Guidelines on page two. That's the plain language of the rules as written.
Thank you very much, City Attorney. City Clerk, any other cards?
No, so patient.
All right. City Council, we're talking about the comprehensive plan changes. Year report to the state. Member Nelson?
Move to approve the transmittal of the year based on amendments to the comp plan.
Second. I have a motion by Member Nelson, second by Vice Mayor Cole. Any discussion from council?
Does this include the P&amp;Z recommendations?
Yeah, that was my question. Yes.
Yes.
And I understand those have already been changed. So, it includes those, but that's already done.
That's correct.
All right, so, motion still stands, second. City Clerk, can you call the rule, please?
Member Moscoso?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Connors?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cole?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. City Manager?
Sir, the next two items are subject to quasi-judicial rules of procedure, and before we go to 9B, City Attorney will refresh us on the rules.
This, these are the quasi-judicial proceedings as written previously. During the public hearing portion of the meeting, anyone wishing to speak on a quasi-judicial item must first sign public hearing agenda card and sign the oath contained thereon, swearing to tell the truth, the full truth, and nothing but the truth. These cards are located on the table at the entrance of the chambers and should be provided to the clerk. Those speaking in favor of requests will be heard first. If you have photographs, sketches, or documents that you desire for the city council to consider, they must be submitted into evidence and will be retained by the city. Please submit any exhibits to the city clerk. City clerk, may I inquire, have you received such oath, oath cards from persons wishing to speak before the city council?
Yes, ma'am.
And those cards indicate they're willing and able to, to tell the truth, the full truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, ma'am.
If there is anyone present who has not signed an oath card that wishes to speak on a quasi-judicial item, please submit a card to the clerk at this time. And I'll read the instructions for ex parte communications. In the event that a council member has received an ex parte communication, verbal or written, outside of the hearing, the council member shall disclose the identity of the person, group, or entity with whom the communication took place, and the subject of the communication, including all opinions or facts disclosed. Any written communication must be disclosed and made a part of the record. Also, in the event that the member has conducted an investigation or site visit, or received any expert opinions regarding the quasi-judicial item, said visit or opinion shall be disclosed at this time. If written ex parte communication exists, verify that the applicant has received them and has had the opportunity to review and is ready to proceed at this time. Those are the instructions as written.
Counsel? Member Stokel?
We got this email, I think, to all of us, from the Forest Hills Baptist Church regarding their, that they couldn't be there, and for access extension to any future development road from Forest Hills Baptist Church, parking lot entrance to ensure safety ingress and egress to State Road 405. So, about that, so I just wanted to disclose it.
So, who are we doing?
We're not on that item.
Yeah.
That, that comes up for the first reading, I believe.
I apologize.
All right, seeing none?
Sir, the next item is 9B, Small Scale Amendment 5-TAC 2025. That item has been withdrawn by the applicant, and we rescheduled and heard at a later date, and re-advertised.
City Manager, hold on a second. City Clerk, did you receive any cards on that item?
See.
No, I'm talking about 9B. Did anybody submit cards? Okay, I was just making sure nobody was here waiting for that item. City Manager?
Sir, the next item is 9C, and that is the Small Scale Amendment 6-2025, Annexation, Small Scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment, Resoning of Golden Knights Boulevard Industrial. And Brad Parson's here to provide the narrative.
The staff report starts, starts on page 412 of your packet, and I'll just give a brief description of the application for the public hearing. This includes an annexation, a comprehensive plan amendment to the, to amend the city's comprehensive plan, future land use map, and a rezoning. So, there are three ordinances before you. The first action is going to have to be the annexation, and then the next one will be the comprehensive plan amendment, and then the final one will be the rezoning.
Mayor, if I may, we should read the ordinances before we get any further into this, and City Attorney will do that. It's my bad.
I'll get.
Ordinance number 32-2025, amending Section 7, Chapter 63-2001, laws of Florida, Special Acts of 1963, by annexing certain property located south of Golden Knights Boulevard and east of Tyco Road, having parcel ID numbers 23-35-02-01-STAR-90 and 23-35-02-01-STAR-77 to be included within the city limits, providing for severability, providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances, and providing for an effective date. The second ordinance, number 33-2025, amending the code of ordinances by amending ordinance number 60-198, which adopted the comprehensive plan of the City of Titusville, by amending the future land use map by changing the land use designation on approximately 9.18 plus or minus acres of property located south of Golden Knights Boulevard and east of Tyco Road, having Brevard County parcel ID numbers 23-35-02-01-STAR-90 and 23-35-02-01-STAR-77 from the industrial parentheses, Brevard County, future land use designation to the industrial paren, City of Titusville, future land use designation, providing for severability, providing for the repeal of conflicting ordinances, and providing for an effective date. Third ordinance, number 34-2025, amending ordinance number 5-1993 of the City of Titusville by amending the zoning map made a part of said ordinance by reference by changing the light industrial paren IU, Brevard County, zoning district to the industrial paren M-2 zoning district on the approximate, on approximately 9.18 plus or minus acres of property located south of Golden Knights Boulevard and east of Tyco Road, having Brevard County parcel ID numbers 23-35-02-01-STAR-90 and 23-35-02-01-STAR-77, providing for severability, providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances, and providing for an effective date. I think that's it.
Thank you, City Attorney. City Clerk?
Yes, sir. Jean?
Oh, sorry, I skipped over Brad. We got all of them.
I'll be brief. The, so again, you have the three ordinances. You have to make action with each one individually. On page 413 of your packet, I'll just give a brief description of the, the request here. The applicant is requesting a voluntary annexation with a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment for, you know, nine-plus acres of land. The property is made up of two parcels with unincorporated Brevard County and currently vacant. The property is situated south of Golden Knights Boulevard and east of Tyco Road. The property has a flu designation, Brevard County Flu Designation. So, the annexation will then require you to amend the comprehensive plan, or basically put the city's comprehensive plan on it. Without that action, it'll continue to have the county's comprehensive plan. After that, then you'll have to amend the zoning by putting the city zoning, which is, they're being requested to put the industrial, which is our most intense industrial zoning district, onto the property. We believe that is consistent with what's already there, which is the light industrial of Brevard County. We did include in your report on page 414 of your packet, a comparison of the light industrial county zoning versus the city's industrial M2 zoning. And you could see that there are many uses that would be permitted by right that are more expansive in the M2 in the city's zoning code. So, it appears that there, there's more restrictive in the county, it'd be more expansive in the city. Again, this, our city M2 zoning is the most intense. We believe it's appropriate there. Where it's located, there's similar zoning around there. We believe even with the county zoning that's remaining around this property, eventually this entire area will be annexed into the city and be incorporated, and will have a similar zoning. It's primarily at the entrance of the airport, between the airport and US1. On page 415 of your packet, we did an analysis, or analysis consistent with the Florida statutes, Chapter 171. This is a voluntary annexation. We believe this annexation is consistent with the statute. It is contiguous to the municipality and reasonably compact, and results in a, and does not result in the creation of an enclave, it actually reduces an enclave, which is another priority of the statute. The comprehensive plan, future land use element, policy 1.7.2, considers annexation. We believe that the annexation is consistent with that comprehensive plan policy. One of the reasons for the annexation is that when a development comes in and they, and it's in unincorporated county, they require our U services for water or sewer. We typically are going to require them to annex if they are able to annex. If they are not able to annex immediately, then we'll have to do a, an agreement with them that'll allow us to annex in the future. But in this case, this property is immediately adjacent to the city. I'm going to skip to page 423 of your packet. We did our analysis consistent with several policies of the comprehensive plan that we believe are most relevant to this. On page 420, and then we also reviewed it against the criteria for rezoning in the code. On page 423, some of the highlights, staff's analysis findings, the annexation is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan and Chapter 171 of the code, of the statute, rather. The future land use small-scale map amendment is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan. The proposed rezoning to industrial M2 zoning district is consistent with the proposed industrial future- future land use category and the city's comprehensive plan. We believe that there is adequate water and sewer service to serve the proposed facility. Our recommendation is to approve the annexation, approve the comprehensive plan, future land use map amendment, and approve the rezoning from light industrial county to the M2 zoning in the city. I'm going to point to you page 452 of your packet and show you an aerial so you can get a, orient yourself as to where this property is located. On the south side of Golden Knights Boulevard, if this is developed, it'll have to adhere to that recent ordinance from last year where there would be an additional buffer along Golden Knights. If you recall, that was worked out with the, with the airport. And then finally, on page 453 of your packet, the next page, you'll see the current land use designation in the county versus what it will be if this is annexed and the land use is amended. And so you can see the majority of that area is industrial. With that, Attorney, answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Mr. Parrish. City clerk?
Jean Abian.
Good evening, Mayor, Council members. My name is Jean Abian. I'm with Thomas and Hutton. We're the civil engineers representing the developer. Staff has made a great presentation. I'm not going to repeat it. We concur with Staff's recommendation. The area is industrial, so we are consistent and compatible with the city, the current city zoning that is around us. And so we respectfully ask you to approve the annexation and the amendment to the comp plan and the rezoning. I'm mainly here for any questions that you may have and to have any rebuttal if somebody comes in and asks any question, and I can respond to that.
Thank you very much, sir. City clerk?
Carrie Kennedy. Did you want to speak on this one or the next one?
It's this one. But I'll wave my right hand here.
Okay. And then Stan Johnston.
As you know, I'm a professional engineer registered by the state of Florida to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the public. So this project is within my jurisdiction. Some people say, judge not unless you be judged. What they forget is, if they continue reading it, it says, that by that which you judge others, you too shall be judged. I'm in a position of judgment many times about what the city of Titusville is doing. And I find the city of Titusville guilty, guilty, guilty of violation of numerous laws again and again, especially in stormwater. So I asked the question to staff on this particular subject. This is the stormwater management plan of the greater Titusville, of greater Titusville, stormwater drainage plan that the city has adopted. So my question is to staff is that, have you reviewed this project according to the stormwater master plan? That's my question. I don't believe they have. Can I get an answer?
Mr. Johnson, you direct your public comments.
I asked, okay, I'm asking you, could you ask staff, has this project been reviewed in compliance, in formance with the comprehensive, with the, with the stormwater management plan of the, of greater Titusville?
Mr. Johnson, Brad just gave us a detailed report of all the reasons why they felt it was deemed appropriate.
He has not reviewed it. I, that's what I, that's what I complained, according to the stormwater master plan. But the fact is, is that I paid $35 or more and gave him a copy of this stormwater management plan, and I do not believe that he can answer truthfully saying that this, this project has been reviewed according to the stormwater master plan. He won't do it. You won't ask him. You just, you just cover up for his mistakes. That's what you're doing. That's what you're doing. That's what all of you are doing. The city of Titusville is flooded because you're not listening to what I have been saying for many times. The city of Titusville disobeys God's laws. For example, there's another law, God's law, that I, is, God's law says, two things cannot occupy the same place at the same time. That's compensatory storage. The city of Titusville violates that repeatedly. That's one of the reasons we're flooded. Another law that says, it says, thou shalt not steal. In other words, what you're doing is you're taking property. When you flood people's property and build dams, you don't recognize it. Violations of laws. Now, as far as what this lady read about that, is she's saying, she's saying that you just violated my, my freedom of rights.
No, she did not. Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
I had this to show. No, thank you.
City clerk, any other cards?
No, sir.
All ready. Would you like to rebuttal? Yeah, you, would you like to rebuttal? You have that right.
I have a great respect with Mr. Johnson. I know him from a long time ago. But we are today only requesting an annexation and amendment to the comp plan and rezoning. We're not going through a site plan. But just like to add a little bit, we did meet with staff and we discussed this project with them. And staff told us upfront that while our property drains to the east, but we don't have illegal positive outfalls, so they're making us hold the entire hundred-year storm event within our sight. So staff already made it clear to us there will be notice charge from our side. We have sandy soil, very deep groundwater tables, so we will be able to meet this criteria. Just explaining, but this is not a site plan review. But staff took the extra step to explain to us what to expect going forward.
Thank you, sir. City council? Member Nelson?
Move to approve ordinance number 32-2025, annexing certain property located south of Golden Knights Boulevard, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, and providing an effective date.
Second.
Well, I have a motion, I have a second, so at this point, I'll close the public hearing. City clerk?
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Connors?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cole?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Moscoso?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. Member Nelson?
Move to approve ordinance number 33-2025, amending the comp plan by amending the future land use map from industrial Brevard County to industrial city of Titusville.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second. City manager, were you trying to say something? City manager, were you going to say, jump in there before she made the motion?
I'm sorry, sir. I was reading something.
Okay, just making sure. City clerk?
Yes, sir. Mayor Connors?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cole?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Moscoso?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. Member Nelson?
Move to approve ordinance number 34-2025, amending the zoning map, changing light industrial to industrial zoning.
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second. City clerk?
Vice Mayor Cole?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Moscoso?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Connors?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you very much. City manager?
Sir, moving on to what I was just reading, the ordinances, first reading, and we're going to have our city attorney read both ordinances.
Ordinance number 38-2025, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending the code of ordinances by amending ordinance number 60-1988, which adopted the comprehensive plan of the city of Titusville by amending the future land use designation on land located at the southeast corner of the intersection of Singleton Avenue and State Road 405 South Street from low-density residential to conservation on 11.25 plus or minus acres of property and from conservation to low-density residential on .44 plus or minus acres of the property providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, and providing for an effective date. Ordinance number 39-2025, an ordinance amending ordinance number 5-1993, 1993 of the city of Titusville, Florida, and by amending the zoning map made of part of said ordinance by reference by changing the zoning classification on land located at the southeast corner of the intersection of South Singleton Avenue and State Road 405 South Street from the general use, GU zoning district to the planned development, PD zoning district on 27.99 plus or minus acres of the property and from the open space recreational, OR zoning district to the planned development, PD zoning district on 0.44 plus or minus acres of the property having parcel providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, City Attorney. Mr. Parrish?
This is our first reading, so I'll just try to answer any questions you have. The next, the public hearing will be on November 11th.
Thank you very much, Mr. Parrish. City clerk?
Jill Dawson.
You should have some photos in your hands. I'm Jill Dobson, Titusville. My husband and I own the adjacent 25 acres of designated conservation land that includes four-acre lake on the south boundary of the proposed PD South development and borders the wetlands to the west. Our property receives a significant amount of runoff from existing developments along the higher elevation on Park Avenue, including Country Club Heights, Tennis Village, Heritage Apartments, and Whispering Hills Estates. Additionally, runoff from the, into the lake from wetlands to the west, east, and north, including the proposed PD South. Water drains to the east, finally flowing downtown into Titusville and the Indian River Lagoon. And Titusville conservation, in Titusville conservation areas are environmentally sensitive areas. Please reference the aerial photo that you were given and the flooding photos that are in the packet. I'll be referring to those. The area is unique mixture of topography, highlands, and wetlands, not typical to most areas of Titusville. My concerns are the negative impacts of the PD South will have on the environmentally sensitive areas and the destruction of large areas of old-growth oak forest, the significant threat to flooding to existing single-family homes in Country Club Heights and Whispering Hills neighborhoods, which already experience flooding due to runoff from existing surrounding developments and topography during normal Florida rainstorms, not the past significant event of Sunday. The proposed development master site plan places multifamily buildings 40 feet tall, 100 feet wide, near the lake, and a detention pond within 10 feet, 10 to 20 feet of the lake's edge, on a hill 25 feet above the lake, dramatically increasing runoff and soil erosion directly into the lake adjacent to single-family, single-story homes. The development will push water downhill, draining the higher PD South elevation into the lake, into neighbors, neighborhoods, and the lagoon. The existing tree, trees absorb a tremendous amount of water and deliver soil stability. Today, that will be replaced with the, with acres of impervious surface, including massive buildings very close to the lake. The lake and drainage systems are working to protect the resident's safety and property values. Adding the strain of another large development unnecessarily adds significant pressure to an already overstretched asset. Once this land change has, has been made, it cannot be undone, negatively affecting our community forever. Please don't make this situation worse by adding significant pressure through more development. What questions do you have?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
City clerk?
Angelia Falsen.
I am concerned of the development for PD South. My concern is for my property value as well, the rezoning, the forest, the wildlife, the preservation, the conservation land, also in the community as a whole, and all the residents who have the historical homes that we all live in, that have been here for 70 years, and the families that have been lifetime residents here, lifetime taxpayers here. This is their sanctuary as well. I do not support the small-scale amendment or the rezoning. I request that you deny this to the rezoning and amendment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. City clerk?
Laurlee Thompson.
I support the small-scale amendment, change in the conservation land use. They're going to have to do that regardless of whatever they do with the property. I'm okay with that. I, I'm opposed to the PD zoning. And, you know, when you look at the, the past pattern of development in that area, there are no buildings higher than 20 feet. There's a couple of old apartment complexes that were built a long, long time ago that are two-story. There's a few two-story houses. The most recent development is right across the street. It's a beautiful, single-family residence subdivision called Serrano Point. It's absolutely spectacular, and that is the kind of development that, that's the most recent development in this area. There are zero 40-foot buildings anywhere along 405. If you, if you approve this, then you're going to set a precedent for that type of development in the borders of our conservation lands along State Road 405. The, the developer is allowed to build 16 single-family residences. They could create a really beautiful conservation-type development on that land and not have all the impervious surface of parking lots and 40-foot-tall buildings and the increased density that most definitely is going to impact our conservation lands and these wetlands that continually flood the neighborhoods downstream. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. City clerk?
Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, I'm a registered engineer, and I'm reading from what I believe our city attorney just read. It says, "Packards or signs are only permitted in the back of the room unless utilized as a part of speaker's presentation." That's dated 4/24/18. Is that the same thing that you read? Let me read it again. "Packards and signs are only permitted in the back of the room unless utilized as a part of speaker's presentation." Several times tonight, I've been disallowed to, to, to present my signs as part of my presentation.
Mr. Johnson, you're not giving a presentation, you're providing public comment.
Pardon?
You are providing public comment. You are not giving a presentation.
I'm presenting my comments. And so in other words, okay, I'm, so I, so I should, I'm going to take this back then because of what you said. I believe this is just what happened, was the freedom of speech was just violated. It was just violated several times at, this evening by Mr. Connors and all the rest of you two. And I, maybe I should say, also point this lady here. Because I, I, so what I'll probably do is I'll probably Because I, I, so what I'll probably do is I'll probably sue you.
Mr. Johnson, please stay at the topic at hand.
This is the topic right now. I'm trying to talk on this. Now, this, this particular topic is that I've also presented already. I've asked the question. Stormwater master plan. When was it, P and Z? Stormwater master plan. Hasn't been reviewed by them. I'm not saying I'm opposed to it. I'm just saying the city of Titusville needs to do their homework. And I'm saying right now is, Mr. Parrish has not done his homework. He has not looked on the comprehensive plan of what it says and what to do with his property and what it does to do with this young, these owners, what it has to do. It hasn't, it has, there's a significant difference, and very important essential things has to do with flooding of the city of Titusville that they talked about, that I've talked about, that has happened. And in this particular presentation, I was going to show you, in this illustration, I'm going to show you where the city of Titusville violated numerous laws, like putting dams in ditches and violation of city code, I believe it's twelve dash eleven, and violation of constitution, taking a property without due process of law. No survey done for what these dams flooded. Four dams. This is what you're doing illegally. This stinks. This is corruption by our government, the city of Titusville, including Mrs. Moscoso, who hasn't said anything about it. Flooding property is illegal. Thank you.
City Clerk, any other cards? All right. Thank you all for being here tonight. Again, it's a first reading. No actions taken. City Manager?
Yes, sir. There is no items eleven, old business or twelve, new business. And next item is petitions.
All right, so we're at petitions and requests from the public, non-agenda items. Anybody that hadn't spoke the first time around? Seeing none. City Manager?
Next would be Mayor and Council report, sir.
All right, I guess I'll kick it off, guys. I have a request to, for council to approve a proclamation recognizing November twenty twenty-five as Hospice and Palliative Care Month in the city of Titusville to St. Francis Reflections at the number, November twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, City Council Presentations Meeting. Is there anybody opposed to that? I have to make a motion, yeah.
Okay, I'll make the motion.
We have card.
Yeah, I understand. Make the motion first. Motion?
Second.
Motion of a second. City Clerk?
Stan Johnston.
My name is Stan Johnston, and I'm a professional engineer. You've heard it many times. And you've made a proclamation that I'm not opposed to, but what you've done, you've made a decision to make a motion a second before I even speak. Hey, what's going on here? I have a speaking card, and you make, and your process is you make a motion and you second it before I even get to put any input in.
We called you up here. Your input.
You called me after you made the motion.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. In other words, and you're making, so you started your RE decision. Two people have made a decision already before I even get to speak.
Mr. Johnson, please comment on the topic at hand about the proclamation.
Mr. Connors.
You are officially cautioned.
Mr. Connors, let's be truthful about what's going on here. Is that right procedure?
Yes.
Oh, it is right. Okay. I don't know what I'm doing. Okay. So in other words, you guys go ahead and make a lot of your decisions, your motion before.
All right, Mr. Johnson, have a seat.
Pardon?
Have a seat.
I'm speaking about what you're doing right now.
Please have a seat.
Okay, I'm going to sit down under duress.
Thank you very much.
Another violation of our freedom of speech.
Okay. I have a motion, and I have a second for the proclamation. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Also, if wasn't included in the agenda packet, Christine was, was out, and it didn't make the deadline, you all should have received in your box a map of downtown. Okay? All right. Yes, that is the map. All right. So our CRA, our city council, has been trying to slow down downtown for a long time, try to make it more walkable and accessible and safer for our residents. Couple months back, I had a meeting with Secretary Tyler, who leads all of District Five FDOT, the seven counties that it encompasses. We walked around downtown. I explained our issues. And his staff had a meeting with me last week. It was their governmental affairs person and like five project managers. And they said, "We got direction from our boss to make some changes for you guys." They said, "This plan is the quickest that we can do to make it safe and effective." So what you'll see on the plan is not only speed sign, or speed limit signs that are not obstructed by tree branches, which is helpful, but also radar detection in them. There's also pavement markings leading up to crosswalks, speed signs in the middle painted on the road so that people will see them, even if they're not paying attention to the side of the roads. There's also uniform crosswalks with the RF, RFD flashers downtown. And they basically said to me, "You say go, we will get to work on this." And I said, "I can't make that decision." So I'm bringing it before y'all. Tell me if you approve of their plan. I asked them, you know, "What about raised crosswalks? Are there these other possible slowdown techniques?" And they said, "This is what we can do quickly to help you guys out." I know this has been something that has been requested of the city of Titusville for, you know, probably ten-plus years. So I just wanted to show you the fruits of some labor and see what you guys think. Member Stokel?
Yes, so this first map that we have, the picture, did they create this from the state, like looking at our area and say, "This is what we suggest"? And do we have any option to deviate from this? Or is this what they said, "Lou can do this? Do you guys want to move forward?"
They said, "We can do this if you want to move forward." I also brought up some other points of concern, you know, future developments, Broad Street project, you know, the PD that's coming down south, or up north a little bit. You know, it wasn't just them looking at aerial, because when Secretary Tyler came to City Hall to meet me, we walked around downtown. It was just him. It was the Director of Brevard Operations. It was their governmental affairs, you know, their engineers. So, you know, they took a pretty extensive look at it and reevaluated their speed study that they did. Remember, they did a speed study and said, "Speed could be faster," right? And they said, "We appreciate you giving us a firsthand account, look at your downtown and its unique characteristic. We'll relook at the data, and we'll come back to you with the plan." And this is their plan.
And then I guess my other thing, I, I mean, I think this is great because we talked about this previously at a CRA and council meeting. And they, I think, had proposed different items than this. I know we had talked about the flashers, and at one point, they said, "We won't do flashing." So I'm in favor of it, and it sounds like it's, I don't know if it's something that we would need to put on our agenda because it's not really our decision. It's the state's decision. So, no, I think this is exactly what we were talking about. I don't think it's realistic to actually do anything different than probably this, based on the conversations that have had, that have happened prior. So I think this will help to slow it down some, and then we continue to work on our street parties and stuff, maybe over on Julia Street, Main Street, the outskirts of US One. I think this is the best that we can do with considering it's a major highway. So, no, I would be in favor of it. Thank you for bringing this forward.
Thank you, Member Stokel. Member Nelson?
I agree with Sarah. I'd still love to have the red flashing light at Julia Street.
Okay, you're saying Julia. Because I was like, they do have flashing on here.
Well, Julia and US One, northbound, because that seems to be a particularly dangerous intersection. But, I mean, if this is something they can do quickly, we take it. Yep.
And Member Nelson, I apologize. I did not ask that question about red flashing lights on those. And I think, I remember conversations that they don't do that, right? Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so to clarify, then there's none on here that are flashing?
No, no, they're yellow flashing. They're not red flashing.
Okay, no, okay.
Member Nelson was talking about red flashing.
Okay, that's why I was confused.
I thought one of the beach communities had a red flashing light.
That's the HAWK system. It's actually a pedestrian traffic signal. This is rapid flashers. So these are a, much easier for them to do.
And cheaper.
Yeah, somewhat cheaper. I wouldn't say they're cheap.
Okay. But I like how it's multiple approaches. So you'll have the flash, the yellow flashing, but you also have stuff on the road and extra signage. So I think it will kind of shift the culture a little bit as people are going down that road.
Thank you very much, Member Moscoso.
I appreciate all the time and effort you've put in this. Have our, has our staff had a chance to look at this?
Yes, I discussed it with Traffic Ops of DOT as well.
Okay, and so you guys completely support this?
Yeah, they're gonna, they're evaluating our lights now to see if they have to improve our lights or use our current ones. But no, the, the plan they have, I think, meets the goal that the council asked for.
Okay.
And we even offered to add it to our maintenance for traffic signals. We maintain the other flasher now. So from my understanding, the secretary had greenlit the project and actually funded it.
Okay, wonderful.
But they do want the council's support.
Okay, absolutely. I just wanted to make sure that, because, I mean, we're just seeing it now that, that you guys have seen it, and everybody's giving the green light. So, thank you.
Yeah, FDOT staff met with our staff prior to meeting with me. You know, they did a staff-to-staff conversation after the secretary basically gave them a directive to, to get this done for us. Thank you. Vice Mayor, cool.
I just wanted to add to, the mayor and I are on the Transportation Board, and I tell you what, getting anything out of them is very difficult. We have discussed this in our board meetings. And, you know, Cocoa Beach had the raised crosswalks, and the mayor wanted that taken out because he didn't, they didn't like it down there. But I said, "Anything we get, and that plan looks good, I think if we, you got them to do it, I don't know what you promised them, but..."
And I got them to pay for it. What are you talking about? I just have charming good looks for me.
Oh, yeah, okay.
All right, well, it sounds like we're in a consensus. I don't think I need to take any formal action. I'll let them know that our council's in support. And then the next thing I want to bring up is what I teased at the beginning of the meeting, our stormwater master plan that was written in nineteen sixty-six. It had addendums in nineteen ninety-three and two thousand and seven that were mostly around studying different basins. And there was never a complete relook at this master plan for stormwater. I believe a few years back, it might have been brought up. It was an estimated cost of six hundred thousand dollars. Council apparently did not move forward with that. It'll probably cost eight hundred thousand dollars at this point. But I think it's an important step that we take as we look at all of our plans, whether it's our comprehensive plan or economic development plan. We might as well look at the stormwater master plan because, as I said in the beginning, we need to do everything we can to make sure things like this don't happen again. And as things have grown and changed around Titusville, it is not nineteen sixty-six anymore. We need to have a very crystal, crystal-clear goal and objective for our community. So that is my ask of council, that we direct staff to evaluate that and bring, bring something like that back before us in terms of advisability. But that would be my ask of you guys. Member Nelson?
I agree. I think it's important. However, we also turned around and asked for a study of the St. John's Basin. So my question with Kevin would be, do we wait until we get that back and then go forward with the stormwater master plan? Or looking at it, revising it?
I think it depends on what the parameters the council would like to address in a master plan. If we're looking to raise the level of service above the hundred-year storm comprehensively, the entire city, I think the plan that's currently under grant funding won't be affected by that because it's going to have to incorporate some of that shifting of water. So I think that would be the question was if, the old plan was more of a move-water-around plan. It was really meant to drain wetlands, move things through an old system. If we're looking to take what today would be, I would say, a ten-to-twenty-five-year design system and upgrade it to the hundred, then, then that would be a comprehensive citywide. The other question would be, is the council would like us to take a more focused approach and pick out those flood-prone areas to address first? It's really up to the council, but it will sculpt how we procure a consultant. The previous plan, as the mayor mentioned, was six hundred seventy-five thousand. That was a comprehensive citywide plan for flooding. So specifically targeting flood-prone areas, raising the standard for flooding. There are a number of subdivisions in the city that were not affected by flooding, the newer ones mainly. But there are a lot of the older ones are. I don't think that we should wait for the St. Johns if the council would like us to move that plan forward. It will take quite a bit of time to develop that model.
Okay, okay. Then I would agree. And I think we need to go above the one-hundred-year planning for a hundred-year flood.
You thinking like one-twenty-five?
I was thinking more like five hundred.
Five hundred?
I mean, you know, I don't know if you guys remember. I don't know how this impacted Titusville. But back in twenty oh seven, we had like, what, two weeks of rain straight? You remember that? And all our roads were flooded. I got two weeks off work. That was great because you couldn't get to work. Courts were closed. Nobody could go to court. But, you know, this seems to be happening more and more frequently. So I would support it.
Thank you, Member Nelson. Member Stokel?
Yes, I'm definitely in support. My, I guess my question, or I wanted to see what your guys' opinion is on this. I was hoping that maybe we could get, like, more of a status and an update of where we currently are in terms of three areas that I feel like I've been noticing, and I want to make sure that, before we move forward on any decisions, that we understand like the full picture of what's happening. And so the three areas were development and like what our current standards are. If we are approving development or what staff is approving per policy for a hundred-year storm, what does that mean and what does that actually look like for us? Because development does impact what's happening. I mean, you can't argue pervious pavement versus impervious pavement. So I think that's part of what we need to look at, the stormwater master plan and how that aligns with development. I think, to the mayor's point, it's very outdated. And then the third one, what does our current schedule look like for cleaning and maintaining our current drainage systems, ditches? So those are the three areas that I feel like, they're all great things, but I don't want us just like picking and choosing one, and then we're neglecting another one. But those were the three ones that I feel like, if we could get a holistic picture of what is happening within those three areas, I feel like we can then make better policy. We can maybe say we need more employees in a certain department, if, whatever's happening currently. Because I think those are the three things, in my opinion, that we should work on improving to make sure, to your point, Member Nelson, that, I mean, these storms are happening way more frequently. So that's kind of what I was wanting.
This isn't your report. This is my ask.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. You were asking for that one thing, and I wanted to expand it a little bit.
Could I expand one more thing on your report? Could we add the status of our water treatment plants?
Yeah.
Because it doesn't matter how clean our ditches are. It just means the water's going to get there faster, and they're not holding the water right now. So it's great to clean them out, but...
Yes.
If the water's faster actually right now, that would be a really bad thing.
So, I got, yes, so those four areas. If we could get some type of staff presentation on those four, an overview, and then we could maybe have discussion and see what does our focus need to be? Like, to Kevin's point, should we focus on those flood-prone areas first and make kind of priorities?
So, just to counter, combat, I guess you'd say, why I'm pushing for the Stormwater Master Plan is, I believe there are several areas of that plan that are probably not up to the Florida statute.
No, I would agree with you, and I, I...
You should probably definitely look at updating it.
And the reason I'm saying that is, I feel like I would like to hear from staff to kind of give an update of, what is, what does it currently look like? Because I think about that for my job, if, if a board were to ask me, "Can you tell me really what's happening here?", I could tell you exactly where I feel like I'd need more money, where I could use more employees, where, what would make sense. And I would like to have the staff be able to provide that to us to maybe change policy. That's, that's my big thing that I want. And to your point, yes, to incorporate, we might not be meeting state statute. I don't know that.
So, maybe a presentation?
Yes, some type of presentation or workshop, whatever staff thinks is better. But those are the main areas, the development, Stormwater Master Plan, current schedule for cleaning and maintaining all of our drains, ditches, list stations, and then the water treatment plants as well. So four items.
But she's doing a good job.
I know, she's doing a good job, but still not your reporter. Like, I just asked, you know, you guys to, you know, give advisability on Stormwater Master Plan, but...
Vice Mayor Cole?
Yeah, I think we need to take a stair-step approaching this, and I, I, I agree with everything that everyone has said, but I'm not sure that... And you can answer this better than anybody else, Kevin. What you have asked for is almost a comprehensive report of where we are right now. Do you have the in-house capabilities to do that, or do we have to go outhouse to do it?
Well, we can give a report of where we are now.
Yeah.
But we can't, no, the, the flooding master plan would be an outsourced item. But certainly, I think...
So, what, what Member Stokel asked, you have the capability of putting a presentation together for us on that?
Yeah, we can give a level service presentation and, and, you know, kind of touch on the items you have. We work with Brad on the specific development items, but I think maybe two separate items. One is the, the...
Right.
There'll be time to develop a scope to get to, and I can do a presentation in between if, if that's what the council desires.
So, hopefully we can walk and chew gum at the same time. Hopefully, we can give direction to staff to start the process of, you know, hiring a consultant and bringing that back before us, because that'll take some time. And then while they do that, hopefully we can have that presentation in the meantime, and then ultimately that contract would come before council to be approved. Right? So, that's kind of my walk-in and chewing gum. Yes, I need a motion, if you're gonna make that motion. Member Nelson?
Yeah.
I, I need a motion first, so I know what people, know what they can talk about, because it's not on the agenda.
So I will make that motion.
All right.
Second?
I have a motion and a second to direct staff to bring back before us an advisability for hiring an outside consultant to redo our Stormwater Master Plan. Anybody like to speak on it? I mean, this is your time to shine, Mr. Johnson.
Beg your pardon?
This is your time to shine.
Maybe this is your time to shine also, is to shine very, very in the darkness. So, at the end of my emails, I put this quote, John 1:5, and it has to do with, it says, "And the light shineth in the darkness, and the darkness understandeth it not." So what I'm doing is, I'm trying to shine some light onto you guys. And this time, I've told many, 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 many times violations of laws, violations of the Stormwater Master Plan. For example, see page 7-2 in your Stormwater Master Plan. See that page? It says, it says that maintenance is required for this Stormwater Master Plan, including maintenance to the St. John's River. You don't do it. You don't do it. You don't do it. You violate the Stormwater Master Plan. I have many times. That map right back there, it shows...
Point of order, Mr. Mayor.
Beg your pardon?
Point of order, you, we're talking about doing a comprehensive plan to review these things.
Please stop the time.
And you're telling us what's wrong with the, that, what we aren't doing. You're not on point, Stan. You're not on point. You need to talk about the motion that, that, at hand.
All right.
Okay, stop taking my time. If you're gonna speak, don't time, stop the clock.
Mr. Johnson, just, just continue.
Okay, so, right here, it shows six drainage ditches, canals, and so forth between State Road 50 and Fox Lake Road. Only one of them is functioning. The other ones are blocked. And I just read to you, s, s, page 7-2, that you're violating big time, right now. You don't have those maintained, off-site. Even though they're out of the city limits, it's the responsibility of the city of Titusville, and you're breaking FEMA laws, you're breaking drainage laws, you're just not having them maintained. It's illegal what you're doing. What the city is doing is illegal. We are flooding here because you're not following the Stormwater Master Plan, big time. The same thing that's happened to, to the, into these people that talk about over on Oak... What is that called? Overlook, on overlook. In other words, you've got, you've got issues in here that you're not reporting, that Brad is not reporting, even I gave him, I bought it, I gave him the, the plan. You're not, you're violating right now. You need to correct what you're doing, and what you're doing is violating laws, big time. And you do nothing about it. You just airheads. You guys, as far as I'm concerned, are your, you're shysters and con artists, because you're violating laws, and you're doing it secretly, and you, and it's not...
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Okay, you're welcome.
Anybody else like to comment? Seeing none, I have a motion and I have a second. All those who are here will say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Also, one other little topic of conversation. Crease, career source of Brevard Flagler in Volusia County, is looking for a new headquarters. They would love to do it in the city of Titusville. And as per our economic development presentation, I think we need to work a little bit on that. They could use a place to go. If anybody has any ideas, any city property they can get, cheap or a little, no rent, they would love, because their funding got cut by like a third. So they're really trying to just operate as best they can. So, they need about 5,000 square feet, maybe a little less. So, but... Career Source, Brevard, Flagler, Volusia. So it's all three counties, their headquarters. So, yeah, they would love to come to Titusville. Member Stokel?
Have you talked to them?
Yep.
Okay, they're, so they're moving a spot into our Cocoa Campus, so maybe ask them, since they already have a partnership with us at the Cocoa Campus, if they have space at the Titusville Campus? Have you had a conversation yet with that?
I have not had a conversation with Jack about that. I was gonna let them reach out.
Okay.
But they were specifically asking us as a city, what could we potentially do?
That's the first thing that comes to my mind, since they already have a spot at our Cocoa Campus.
That was part of my recommendation as well.
I feel like that's why you kept looking over at me.
That was part of my recommendation as well, but I also did let them know that, you know, we, we do have some space available in the Harry T. Moore Social Services Center.
Okay.
That might be something to consider as our Community Service Ad hoc Committee moves forward as to what community services looks like and what partners are in there providing services in our community. So I just wanted to kind of put that out in front of you. And then, yeah, that's kind of, that's kind of it for me, guys. But I, I appreciate the, the work we've done tonight, and I'm excited, we'll, we'll, we'll keep pressing on. Anybody else like to go? Member Stokel?
Oh, did we need a motion for the presentation that was requested, or did you get enough direction from us?
No, I, I will, we'll do a presentation.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Does that conclude your report?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cole?
I just want to make a, more or less, a public service announcement. I always have, you know, the last time I came up, I talked about a scam where my doctor's office called me. Well, a friend of mine called me yesterday and said he got a call from the sheriff's office. And they said it was warrant out for his arrest. And obviously, it scared him. It, it's obvious that they are targeting the older communities in Titusville. He says, as he's driving down Highway 1 to go down to the sheriff's office in Melbourne, they called him by the ti, before he got to Tyco, and they said that, you know, if you pay your bond right now, you won't have to go in, and they wanted a $500 bond from him. Well, he recognized at that point that it was somewhat of a scam. Now, I told him to report it to the sheriff's office, I reported it to our police office. But there are a lot of these, everybody needs to be aware that anytime someone calls you and they ask you for money, or they ask you for your credit card, it's a scam. It is a scam. A lot of these things are going on all over the United States. So, all I'm saying is, be aware. Just always be aware. And then, my second thing is, thank you to the police department, the fire department, and Public Works, as Mr. Mayor has already stated. I went around to our sewage treatment plants yesterday and looked at them. And these guys, I mean, I tell you what, it's proud to be on city council here, because I see the dedication that we have from our city employees.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Member Muscoso?
Yes, thank you. I actually went out to Osprey today, and those guys are working really, really hard. It's amazing. But I do think like that, it's always good to go out there, because it's a reminder of how much of a priority that, that plant needs to be. So for me on council, that is, that is a big thing, to make sure that we can handle it. Because even with, I mean, we had all of this rain, but even with just a little bit of rain a few weeks ago, there was an overflow. And, you know, they've had to kind of block things so it doesn't go into the river. So right now, if you go out there, they're literally, they can't handle the water. It's going in a circle around the plant. And they said, "Well, what are we gonna do if more wa, when the rest of the neighborhoods drain? What are we gonna do?" They're figuring it out as they go, but they have a really good attitude. So I think that that needs to be a big priority for us, and that's why I'm asking for kind of an update on the plants, because I feel like we're doing a lot of Band-Aids. And I did ask the operators, like, if there was one thing we could do, what would you need? And they mentioned a sand filter, now, that would have to be something we go through, Kevin. And, I mean, it's quite expensive, but he said that would have really helped a lot as well. And so just keeping that in mind, like, that, that is huge. I think Blue Heron is okay, because they can dump out into the wetlands at this point. That's not gonna be possible in the future, but Osprey is, I think that needs to be one of our top priorities. So that, and then, I, I wanted, I, I'm just gonna see if I can open up a conversation with, I, I guess with the county about seeing if we can get a shelter in North Brevard for when we have hurricanes. I remember, I mean, this wasn't a, a huge issue this time, but I know that last year when we had hurricanes, there was nothing in North Brevard for people to go to. They were all down in the south. And so that's a conversation, and if anybody has any contacts, I'm gonna talk with the county and see about that. But I, I think that that's something of service we need to see if we can provide to our community here. And then, one thing that the county does, and Kevin, you, you might, you can chime in if you, if we have a system like this. I talked to our city manager about this. But when someone has flooding or a request, they, they can just go online and submit that request, and they actually get a confirmation code. And it helps Public Works, or their road and bridges, keep track of it. And so, what happened during this, this hurricane, or this, this rain is, I had people email me pictures and videos, and that was really, really helpful. And I'm trying to document it. I didn't want to overwhelm Kevin, so I kind of picked out the ones that I felt like were really serious at this point. But it would be great to have a system where people could go in and just fill out that service request. A lot of cities have it. And so Heather from the city did reach out and kind of was asking me questions. So, that's something I would like to see our city move forward and have. And Kevin, if we have that, please let me know so that we can start pushing that out. And then, is it being, is it useful, are people using it? Because you're smiling now.
No, when the, when the council approved our asset management system for the water sewer utility, that's part of that, and it's forthcoming.
Okay.
It's in test right now. I think we have our manager trainings coming this week.
Good.
So it'll be in the very near future, there will be a online essential ability for a citizen to enter a work order into our system that currently is not available. But it will be coming real soon, and those work orders will go, be deployed directly to managers' tablets in their trucks.
Excellent. I think that's gonna help a lot. So when people have issues, we can, of course, like, you know, I often reach out to Kevin, but we can direct them to that, and I think that'll make Public Works life a little bit easier too, because you can keep track of it. So, thank you for, for getting on that, I appreciate it.
Member Nelson?
Absolutely nothing. I was going to give Herman a hard time and say, "I didn't get any of those calls."
It's because I'm doing it.
You just said, "They call..." No, I, I would say the only thing that really, wow, glad it quit raining. But other than that, I went over to the Boys and Girls Club Thursday, and we have two volunteers from Lockheed. The kids there were probably 10 to 14, and they were sitting there learning chemistry. I was like, you know, since I had to learn about nano bubbles, I, I thought, maybe I need to sit in. The kids seemed to understand it. I was amazed.
It's all about those valence electrons, Member Nelson? All righty. Yeah.
Sir, I have, on the city manager report, I have two items, or actually, just one item on the city manager report, and that's the fourth quarter strategic accomplishments, which crosswalk over to the goals and objectives. Also, for your information only, no action requested. I was contacted by the Police Hall of Fame, and they indicated that they were going to be closing down, and therefore, that facility would be available, and if the city had any use. And I did conduct a survey or a site visit with staff, and we would like to come back next meeting with an advisability to look into whether or not initial acquisition and renovation would make a good ELC police headquarters. And again, I'm just informing council that I'll be coming with an advisability at the next council meeting. I have no numbers or anything as far as, it's too pre, pre-decisional.
Thank you very much, city manager. City attorney, do you have anything to report?
Nothing, it's just week two, happy to be here, and my first meeting down, hopefully ready to go. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Attorney Treasurer. We're very excited for you to be here. And just a further update from council. We'll probably keep the proclamation of emergency in effect for seven days. I mean, we could repeal that. Yeah, so, but we'll keep it open for the seven days, but we'll most likely close it out. But, just so you guys are aware. Anything else? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.